Good evening and welcome to the Monday, October 20th, meeting of the Select Board. I would like to call this meeting to order and ask that you stand with me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We're going to move on to public comment. Per the Select Board policy, public comment is not a discussion, debate, or dialogue between citizens and the Select Board. It is a citizen's opportunity to express his or her opinion on issues of town business. The Board may respond to a public comment by taking it under consideration when deliberating on an agenda item, or referring the item to the administration for appropriate action or response. Public comment shall be for a period of up to 15 minutes, with speakers being allowed three minutes to present their material. Do we have anyone here for public comment? I think Mr. Capola is?
Hello, good morning. Good afternoon. How are you? Good evening.
Good evening.
As you know, I've been working on the sidewalk issue. And just so you'll know, I delivered some envelopes that you Select Board members have up in front of you. She has already written emails. You will see in it a letter and a thumb drive with pictures on it, with pictures of that area that is uncompleted. The reason I bring it to attention now is because, as you know, it is getting close to winter.
Yes.
And winter, winter makes it difficult for me, more difficult for me, but certainly difficult for the other pedestrians who have to walk in that area too, to get where they're going. And I'm referring to 36, 34 Main Street and near where the Tip-To-Toe Nail Salon is. Here is, this is how I, this is how I go. This is the cane. And it's supposed to help, people are supposed to identify it, and the cars are supposed to let me cross street, cross the street when I have it. So I, so I'm hoping, I'm hoping that being white cane awareness month, that people in this city, town will follow the laws as well as the state. Because we need, we need accessibility. And another thing I'd like to see done in here is some acoustics to make it more accessible for those who are hearing impaired like myself. Because it's very hard to hear what's being said amongst the council members and those who are talking. So I'd like to see that the, that the Select Board consider getting some kind of assistive listening devices for these meetings. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Okay.
And Chair Cam does have assisted listening devices, so I'll make sure that they have them here for Mr. Capola.
Perfect. Thank you so much. It would be great. Okay. Is there any other public comments? One more. Just identify yourself for us then.
Hello, everybody. Thank you for hearing me at the public comment tonight. My name is Joanna Coe, and I am the Executive Director at the North Andover Historical Society. I am here just to show my support. I know that the Festivals Committee have an item on the agenda discussing whether to close Massachusetts Avenue for the tree lighting ceremony on December 30th. The Historical Society has a two-day vendor fair with local craft people and vendors. And we tried to dovetail our event into the tree lighting ceremony this year, but it was very difficult to do so. And as it happens, our event on Sunday is from 12:00 p.m. till 4:00 p.m., with anticipation of the tree lighting ceremony to follow, and everybody would be in the area to attend both. Unfortunately, there have been plans, because of safety issues, to close Massachusetts, the entirety of Massachusetts Avenue on Sunday between 4:00 and 6:00, while the tree lighting ceremony is in place. This would make it really difficult for my vendors. We have about 45 vendors that need to leave at 4:00 o'clock, or between 4:00 and 5:00 o'clock. I would also be in support of a half closure of Massachusetts Avenue with a departing lane for the vendors. And then we would be able to bring people to the Historical Society to use our facilities also during the tree lighting. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Okay. We'll get to that. We will get to that. So.
Sure. But you can stay.
Yeah, you could stay, but we, we'll get to that and appreciate your comments.
No, I understand. It's on the agenda.
Thank you. So, any other public comment? With no other public comment, we're going to head into new business. And Item A is a public hearing, a petition from the National Grid to install underground conduits under and across Boxford Street and Candlestick Road. So we need, I will take a motion to open the public hearing.
I'm filter.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. We're in a public hearing. Okay, and we have Brian Sathler from National Grid to give us the scoop and answer any questions.
Sure. Thank you very much for having me here today. My name is Brian Sathler. I'm here representing National Grid, located at 1101 Turnpike Street in North Andover, or yeah, North Andover. So we're here to discuss work request 31044197. This work request involves Boxford Street and Candlestick Drive. National Grid is to install underground facilities beginning at a point approximately 30 feet southwest of the center line of the intersection of Candlestick Drive and Boxford Street, and continue approximately 1,900 feet in a southeast direction. This is to improve system reliability, as National Grid will be replacing the direct buried system. We'll also be installing six pull boxes. We'll be using directional drilling and installing conduit and PVC pipes in that vicinity. Does anyone have any questions? I know I provided a few sheets of paper regarding the petition. It's quite a long stretch, I understand.
It is.
Why specifically underground conduit for that area?
So currently in that area, we have direct buried wire, which was installed maybe 40, 50 years ago, maybe longer. And direct buried is no longer National Grid regulation due to like, the danger that it could impose, especially if people are digging without doing dig safes, or sometimes accidents happen too, and we understand that. So to remove that danger, we'd rather just remove it and run new conduit through there. That'd be much safer for the public. And our workers too.
Do we have a lot of other of that?
Do you know where there is other?
There's scattered around underground residential areas.
So is National Grid systematically sort of?
Yeah.
Changes?
Essentially, we're taking it and we're, yeah, making sure it's safe in general. No one normally touches it, of course, but it's feet, you know, a few feet deep, but yeah, we're taking that initiative and we're doing our best to make sure it's safe for everyone.
How long will this sort of take? This project take?
This project? I'm not quite sure. It depends on probably weather and how things go. From my understanding, this is directional drilling. So for those not aware of directional drilling, we essentially have a very large machine. It could be used in projects like these that are long stretches, where essentially we dig one hole and we use that drill to bore through long distances. That way, we don't have to rip up so much of the ground. So it's, it's less problematic.
Does the car, does the street need to be closed, or will the cars be able to?
From my understanding...
It's busy, but it's not that busy.
No, those are pretty quiet streets, but.
Depends how busy the area would be. I'm sure that whoever designed this and planned it either has already reached out with a police detail for this job. That's information I can, I can definitely call ahead. But yeah, usually for jobs like this, we would call a police detail to either direct traffic or possibly close down the street while we do the work.
Melissa, how many, how early does he need to call to make sure that he gets a detail?
Oh, he can request the day before. If they have the work scheduled, it's always better to know in advance, but.
Of course.
Yeah.
It looks like you're drilling though, like on people's prop, like the front, underneath the front yards, basically?
A portion of that will be, but we should have rights to...
Yeah, you have rights to it. I'm just, but it's not on the street. You're basically under the grass.
Yeah, we should have sent everyone who's, who will be impacted, information regarding the project. So they should all be aware of the project.
And because you're direct drilling, you don't anticipate major disruption to people's front yards?
I don't anticipate it, but of course, things always happen.
Of course, yeah. And you'll fix.
Of course, yes.
Do you think that you'll have, do you have to go down in the road, or is everything going to be on the grass?
So most of it, I see here, should be on the grass.
Yeah.
Most of it does seem to be on the grass, so hopefully we won't have to bore underneath the street directly, but more than likely, we won't have to.
Then you patch, do you patch curb to curb, or?
We'll be patching the holes that we create. Any damage incurred by us, we will report.
Sorry, his recommendations. The hydro seeding and the...
Yeah, you gotta get on that.
It'd be too cold, right?
I think you have to notify the DPW within 72 hours of any work beginning.
Of course, yep.
We have the questions. We want, we want to be safe.
I agree.
Okay. No other questions, we'll close the hearing.
See if there's any public comments.
Sorry, any public comment? Okay. No public comments, so I will take a motion to close the hearing.
Move to close public hearing?
I'll second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. The public hearing is closed. And now we'll go to Item B, which is to vote on the petition from National Grid to install underground conduits under and across Boxford Street and Candlestick Road. So I will take a motion.
I'll move to approve.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Think we covered it? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. All set. Thank you.
You did a great job.
Yes.
Did the motion include the DPW's conditions?
Conditions?
Yeah.
I think it's a petition.
What's that?
Are you on that study?
No. Making sure everything's going right.
On the, yeah.
Backstopping.
Item C, the request of Veteran Services to use Main Street for the annual Veterans Day Parade on November 11th, 2025, at 10:00 a.m. The usual.
Except, it's low-dedition yet, because we're actually entering at, on the end of the middle school, because they're going to do the dedication for the new sign.
Oh, good.
So a little bit different than usual, but the usual, pretty much.
So there'll be a sign ceremony?
There'll be like, yes, a dedication of the new sign.
And then we, and then we march.
Nope, you'll march first, and then they'll end at the middle school, and then the ceremony will be at the middle school.
At the middle school instead of.
Okay. A little bit further of a walk, but pretty much the same.
You got it.
Yeah.
All right. You can have another cookie if you do that.
There you go. Exactly. We're earning those cookies.
Sounds good. All right. I will move that the Select Board approved the request from Veteran Services to use Main Street for the annual Veterans Day Parade on November 11th, 2025, at 10:00 a.m.
I'll second that.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. Item D, a vote to waive the right of first refusal for the sale of Three Harvest Drive, Unit 303. This is our standard. Any questions, comments? All right. I will take a motion.
I'll move that the Select Board waive the right of first refusal for Three Harvest Drive, Unit 303.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any questions or discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. Item E, now we're getting to the good stuff. The request of Pierce Leary to install a temporary sign at Patriots Park. So we'll ask Pierce to come up, and you did a great job sending us information, but we'd love for you to tell us about your project and what you're planning to do. So let us know who you are, and then, then talk away.
Good evening. My name is Pierce Leary. I live at 26 Andover Street. I am a scout from North Andover Troop 87. As part of my Eagle project, I would like to install a temporary sign at Patriots Memorial Park. My sponsors for this project include Mr. Jeff Clark from VFW Post 2104, and Ms. Leslie Frazier from the North Andover Improvement Society. The sign is a way to both describe the new Global War on Terra monument, as well as the history of the existing monuments. It's intended to help educate the public on the history of Patriots Park and the memorials from the wars and conflicts that the park was made to remember. It tells a bit of the history of each monument, and who was involved in its creation. I designed the sign based on interviews with Ms. Frazier and Ms. Phyllis Slade. The sign will be approximately 16 inches by 24 inches, and it will be printed, it will be digitally printed, self-adhesive calendared vinyl, laminated and applied to a lightweight, rigid, durable substrate called ACM, or aluminum composite material. It will then be mounted on a wooden frame painted black, and the sign will be created by Don Sign Tech. The sign will be displayed from the time it is created, hopefully about two to three weeks after it is approved, until the Global War on Terra monument is installed next summer. It will be located on the triangle where the Global War on Terra monument will be, on the side facing the park. And some other parts of my project include relocating some of the shrubs and preparing the site for the monument, which we did part of the summer, when I had some scouts from my troop come to transplant them. And we will also be using teak oil to refinish some of the benches around the park. Overall, the sign will help introduce the Global War on Terra monument, as well as inform North Andover of our history.
Fantastic. Sounds really good. You've put a lot of work into it, you can tell. And you're working with two of the best in North Andover. Phyllis Slade and Leslie Hopkins. I don't have to get her married, but Leslie.
Frazier?
Frazier, thank you. I've known her for years. No, you're working with the best, and they know a lot about that park. I was part of the crew that renovated it years ago, to match the Olmstead, the designer, the architect, the landscape architect, to put it kind of back as to what he intended. But I was up in Watertown, New York, and there's a zoo that's an Olmstead Zoo. No joke. I'm like, gee, I got one of these in my front yard. And so I always ask the scouts as they come in. I have two Eagle Scouts in my family, and how close to your birthday are we? Because the parents always start really, really bearing down, my vote now.
He's a freshman.
You're a freshman? Oh! You're tall, and you've got time.
In my house, we had 24 hours to spare.
No, that happened.
I know, it happened.
No, there was one, one young man who was about to turn 18. He was about to turn 18, and he couldn't find where he needed to turn the papers in. That's, yeah. It wasn't, not one of my kids, but it was some.
We're very pleased that you have plenty of time, and you've chosen a great community project. We really appreciate all Eagle projects, but I think it's always nice when it's something that's going to benefit our whole community.
And it's creative.
Yeah. They've done a lot of good work on your, on the site creation, so we appreciate it. And there's so many people that use that park, and we'll be able to appreciate it.
Yeah, thank you.
Pierce, how'd you come up with the idea?
Well, I've been hearing a lot from my dad and other people around the VFW about the monument that was planning to be installed, and that they had some stuff that they needed to be done, including transplanting the pepper bush, or the shrubs. And then from that, I started working and saying, what else can I do to help? And education came to mind. Originally, it was going to be some fundraising, but then shifted more into education. So kind of just teaching the town about the history of the park.
That's great.
That's great.
Thank you.
You must be very proud. Yeah. You too, I guess.
Definitely. Very good.
So well, thank you for coming in to share with us.
Yeah. I'll be looking out the window. No joke. I live right on the park.
So with that, I'll take a motion. I will move that the Select Board approve the temporary sign at Patriots Park as presented.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any other comments or questions?
Just thank you. Yes, we appreciate it.
When do you think, when do you think you'll be starting on this? What did you say, three, three to four weeks or something? Okay. That's good, because you're running on time with the weather.
Before the ground freezes, right? Yeah, you want to get in.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. Thank you. Thanks for coming in.
Thank you.
Item F, the request of the Festival Committee for Mass Ave to remain open during the tree lighting event. So you can give the short.
I met with the Forest Department today. We really would like to keep the road closed. Historically, a lot of people park up on Academy Road, and then they walk down, and it's really dark crossing there. So what we're thinking is that we will post a police officer at the crosswalk that's basically at the exit of the Historical Society, that police officer will not only help people cross the street, but also will help people leave that parking lot and go left and out of the Commons, that they will not be impacting the operations.
The only traffic you really have to worry about are the vendors.
Forty-five cars.
Forty-five cars, and yeah. And that'll be that.
So I've spoken, I spoke today with the Festival Committee. They're on board with that plan too.
Yep.
And so I think, and thank you for being here.
Thank you for coming.
But I think, I think we've got a good, and we're going to bring that officer in, so we'll take care of that.
Sounds great.
Is that two, that, 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 do you think we can accomplish that with one detail?
I do. Yeah. The crosswalk kind of right, is like right in the middle of the...
And it's going to be blocked off, so.
It's on the, it's on the west side of, of where the Historical Society is.
It's pretty smack in between. It's like smack in the front.
It's kind of in the middle.
It really is, yeah. Like that's not, people will cross where.
There's slowdowns in traffic that you really can.
Yeah. And I may have to, it's not, and the most of the vendors will probably be gone before, you know.
Maybe we'll borrow a light stanchion. I like those, maybe we'll borrow a light stanchion for that area, just to keep it a little bit more lit up.
Yeah.
It's definitely a tough place to, it's tough to park, to cross.
It's a great idea.
Okay, sounds good.
Perfect.
Thank you. So you're going to block off people entering from the rotary?
The whole road, the whole street's going to be closed on both sides. But then we'll allow them to leave.
To leave and go out to the rotary.
To be able to, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Great solution.
So do we have to vote on?
You don't need to do anything, because you already voted to close the street, so.
So we can, okay.
Yeah, take no action.
We're going to take no action on that item, and move on to the next item. Item G, a CARE Solus update.
Yeah, so we just wanted to, we're going to be rolling out our new CARE Solus program. It's a program that the schools have really been using with a lot of success, in that the town is partnering with them on through our opioid funding. And so it is something we actually let employees know about last week. It's mental health services 24/7, 365. You can text, you can video chat, you can call right from their website, and from a phone number that I can read out if needed. But additionally, on top of that, it also has social service coordination, so food assistance, including food delivery services, shelter support, people who are having issues with housing, and also low, low cost and free medical and dental health care, and finding referrals for that as well. So it, it's really more than, than just a mental health program. It also really is social services too. We're really excited to be rolling this out. We're going to be doing some press on it in the next couple of weeks, but we just wanted to let you know about it before we do that.
That's fantastic.
It's really well utilized at the schools.
I think opening access to the rest of the community is a great idea. Thank you for thinking of that. All right. Any other questions or comments about that? Okay. Moving on to Item H, our appointments. I will look at, to our Appointment Committee to fill us in.
We have wonderful new proposed appoint, committee appointments for the Select Board to consider. Christopher Konareski for the Festivals Committee. He and his family just moved up from Boston just recently. He's a, he's an engineer, and he's got a young family. He's excited to be involved. Brianna Rosari, she lives almost right, right, right on the Commons, and she's got a lot of energy. And I think she's babysat for about half of, half the parents in the, you know, in the area, and she's got a young family. Lauren Logan's a former teacher. She's a graduate of our, of our high school, and she said she's got a passion for planning events, she's got a passion for planning events, organizing, and working with others. So that's a perfect fit for the Festival Committee. Ryan Hincliff for Emergency Man, Management. He's got a behavioral health, he was a behavioral health major, has worked in a lot of Boston-area hospitals. And he's got a, like a history of volunteering at different types of, you know, local, local communities. I forget which ones.
You're way better at it than I am.
But he did, he gave us a list of...
That was a wild one.
He gave us, Ryan, you gave us a list of all sorts of organizations you volunteered for. I forget, I apologize, that I, that I don't remember them now, but he was a great candidate. Couldn't highly recommend, couldn't recommend more. I couldn't highly recommend more for all of them. Great, great group.
Yeah, we're excited to get the Festival Committee some more help.
Yeah, yeah.
All right. So I'll take a motion. They have to be separate, obviously, but I'll take a motion for the Festival Committee.
I will move that the Select Board appoint Christopher Konareski, Brianna Rosier, and Lauren Logan to the Festival Committee as ex-officio members.
I'll second.
Motion and a second. Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And I'll take a motion.
I'll move that the Select Board appoint Ryan Hincliff to Emergency Management through June 30th, 2026.
I'll second.
Motion and a second. Any other questions, discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. Thank you to all. Ahead of your service. All right, with that, we're going to head into licensing. So I'll take a motion to enter licensing.
So moved. I'll second.
Motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Turn it over to you. Great.
So our first item is, is an application for Merrimack, is for a temporary license to store flammables. That requires a public hearing, so I'll make a motion to, I'd like to, I'll make a motion to go into public hearing. If I can.
I'll move that we open the public hearing for the application from Merrimack Condominium Trust for a temporary license to store flammables, combustibles, or explosives at 4 to 100 Compass Point.
Thank you. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, thank you. Any, any, any discussion on that motion? I hear none. Say, hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, so we're in public hearing.[1667.83] Okay, so we're in public hearing. Uh, is anyone here from Merrimack, uh, Merrimack Condominium Trust?
I'm from Palmer Gas.
Oh, okay, come on up.
Yeah, I couldn't make it.
Okay. Um, so you're from Palmer Gas, but why don't you say, uh, state your name and, uh,
My name is Jim Martin, and I'm the sales manager for Palmer Gas and Oil, uh, back into New Hampshire. And, uh, we've taken on Compass Point as one of our accounts.
Okay. Uh, and it's my understanding i- i- is that, is that the re- the reason for storing the, uh, combustibles is that you're, there, is that, is that the condominium association is replacing their?
It's replacing, yes. So, um, previously, they had, uh, another company's propane tanks there. So that company's removed their tanks, and we're putting our tanks there.
Okay.
Why is it a temporary?
Yeah, I was gonna ask, what's the temporary nature of it?
So, um, due to some, um, challenges with access, we needed to have temporary tanks so we could remove, um, the current tanks, and to now have them, um, you know, in code and com- um, compliant, I guess you could say.
The old tanks, were they buried, or?
They were buried.
They were buried.
They were, they were inaccessible because, um, a wall and the rest of the building was built, so there's no way to access them, which, which is a safety concern, 'cause if there's a leak, you can't get to them.
Okay.
So, um, we had to put temporary tanks to provide, um, heat for those customers, and then, um, now we're gonna tie it all in to, um, existing location on site.
So then there will be accessible moving forward for emergency?
Yes, yes, yes.
So this is just for the temporary tanks?
So the temporary tanks are gonna be removed, and we'll have permanent tanks? So that, that was kind of a provision done as like phase one of the project. But, uh, the final phase is to have permanent tanks there, replacing the previous tanks.
So will you come back for a permanent license, or am I missing the boat?
So, you know, I, I don't know what the process is, but we do, um, apply for all the, you know, appropriate permits. We've been working with the town, the fire, um, obviously with the condo association as well.
Do we think item C is not temporary?
Maybe this app, this application is for, I think, an additional three thousand gallons of propane? Maybe they don't. So how many, how many total gallons of propane will, will, will?
So, right now, there was, there was six thousand gallons, and we're gonna have between four and six thousand gallons, depending on, um, clearances.
Okay, so this is just the temporary tanks while you switch over?
Right.
Yeah.
Gotcha.
Right. But at, at the end of the day, we'll have at maximum the same amount, but more likely, potentially, less than what they currently have.
Okay.
So I, so as you're switching over, you need these temporary?
Right.
Makes sense, thank you.
Sorry.
Yeah, it's been a long process.
Do anything else to add on that?
I don't think so.
Is there anyone else that wants, that, that has, uh, anything to, uh, add on, uh, during public hearing?
Well, we don't want people to be cold.
No, the winter will come, I promise you.
It's getting a late start, but that's good.
Okay, so I think, uh, next up would be to, uh, uh, looking for a motion to close public hearing.
So moved. Second.
Uh, any, any further discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, um, motion passes, um, public hearing is closed. Um, looking for a motion on the application.
I'll move that the select board acting as licensing commissioners approve the application from Merrimack Condominium Trust for a temporary license to store an additional three thousand gallons of propane at four to one hundred compass point until November thirtieth, twenty twenty-five.
I'll second that.
Um, any discussion on the, on the motion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Uh, motion passes, thank you. Appreciate it. Uh, next up is, um, a notice from the Mass State Lottery regarding a Keno license at Fairways on High.
Thank you. So we received this from the state. Um, it's just a notice that a Keno license has been applied for. But the process is, is that if we have any objections, we then would have to call a special meeting in licensing, uh, invite the applicant to that meeting, let them be heard, and then we would send any of our objections to the state. If we have no objections to the Keno license, then we need to take no action.
Have we had, like, when was the last time we had a Keno application?
I only remember one since I've been here.
You remember one, awful, I can't remember. Did we?
And we, yeah, we took no action. It wasn't like a store.
Yeah.
We didn't take any action on that one.
Do we know if this is gonna be like, uh, if they're gonna have a video monitor, um?
We don't get any more information about what they're, is going to look like, but I would assume, yes, I think they're all.
I think that's how, yeah.
On to be like that now.
When are they opening? Do we know?
I think they're.
End of the month.
I think they're open. I think they're open.
Yeah.
Oh, I thought, I had, I thought it was the end of the month.
I thought they, I thought they were.
I think they might open.
Yeah.
We'll do a feel, we'll do a, we'll do a feel trip.
We'll do a feel trip.
Feel trip.
Kind of the end of the month.
No, it's not. I keep thinking trick or treat is this Friday, it was, um.
Oh, no.
Wait, wait, I'm looking. October thirtieth.
All right.
Okay, thank you.
You're right.
We got ten days.
Ten days.
I saw a lot of people in there the other day, but they must've just been getting ready.
Checking that out.
So there's no action needed?
No action needed.
Yeah.
Perfect.
Take a motion to close, um, licensing.
So moved. Second.
Um, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Back to you, manager.
Okay. Our next, um, order of business is the approval of the minutes from the open session of October sixth. Did everybody have a chance to look at them? Any changes, questions, edits? Okay. Hearing done, I'll take a motion.
Uh, motion to approve the, uh, the, motion to approve the minutes from, from open session from October sixth, twenty twenty-five.
I have a motion.
As presented, sorry.
And a second. Any further discussion? All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Um, now we're heading into select board updates. Anyone have anything to report on? Nothing going on at all.
So many more wonderful things from the Historical Society, because we're right in the middle of witch month. Uh, the story, uh, of Elizabeth Johnson, Jr., with Carrie LaFiere and Richard Height, uh, tomorrow at the Historical Society. There's, uh, I'll be a witch feature film in discussion, uh, on Sunday. There's a, uh, talk about, uh, North Andover's, our Colonel James Fry, revolutionary hero, hero with Alex Kane, on Tuesday, November fourth, and the list goes on and on, but I won't bore you with all the wonderful details.
You have to come and find out.
That's right, come see for yourself, all these great programs. Great, anybody else?
Trick or treat?
Yes.
Halloween.
Halloween's a coming, on Halloween.
Five thirty to seven thirty. That's what it's been for a while.
Okay. We're all set. Okay, sounds good. We'll hand it over for the town manager's report.
Thank you. A couple of just quick things, just reminding people that we do have some roadwork starting, or just started, um, on Great Pond Road and on Gray Street. So we are expecting some delays, um, in those areas. We do have updated financial, um, update from the North Andover Public Schools Superintendent. That is attached here. Um, you can see that currently they are running, um, within their budget as of the first month. Um, and then we will be expecting another update in November. Uh, I would want to recognize Officers Messina, Officer Seaweed, Officer Furman, Officer Houston, and Sergeant James. They received the Medal of Valor at the Annual Trooper Hannah Memorial Awards for bravery. This is a very hard to receive award. Um, you have to have been in, um, grave danger. And if you remember correctly, this was for the, um, hostage situation that we had on Weavely Street. Um, one of the officers did get some, um, bullet fragments in their face. These officers removed that officer, um, and gave him first aid while they were under gunfire. Uh, it's really a huge honor to receive, so we should be very proud of them. I know I was. Um, additionally, we had our twenty twenty-five employee recognitions. So our public safety employee of the year was Officer Stephanie Rizzo, who, Officer Rizzo has run, um, has to be hundreds of miles to share, it's insane. Um, but for all different types of, um, activities, she actually was unable to be at the lunch because she was running, um, the Chicago Marathon. So she, um, but she does Cops for Cancer, um, the Chicago one was for veterans. She always has a different thing that she's running, raising money for as part of those runs. Our unsung hero, hero is Curtis Johnson, our staff engineer, who really was in charge of, um, all of the Columbia gas restoration, and has done such a great job with that. And our employee of the year was remembering EMS coordinator, firefighter Jeff Tashin, that we lost earlier this year. Um, and then the only other thing that I wanted to remind people was that we have our pumpkin contest going on. They're on the first floor of Town Hall. Uh, so make sure, uh, people vote. You can also vote online. And we want to welcome our new comfort dog, Annie, um, yep, who arrived on Sunday, and, um, will be out and about, I'm sure, soon. She's very, very cute.
What type, what type of dog?
She is, um, a golden Labrador Retriever.
A little bigger than the other one.
She's a little bigger than the other. Right now, she's not. She's teeny tiny. Um, we've got pictures of her on our, um, Facebook page, and also the Police Department of a new Community Impact Unit page. Um, and so if you join that, you can keep up to her with her and all of her shenanigans that I'm sure she will be having. So we're excited to welcome her.
We did get several requests for, we need a new comfort dog.
She's here.
Everybody missed, missed her.
Yeah.
She's here.